Several items of business to take care of. First item of business tonight, we have Reverend Steve Cruz with us tonight for the invocation. Steve, if you'll come up, thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Counsel, it's good to be with you. Let us pray. Father, we ask you tonight that you would give our elected officials now, our city council, we pray that you'd give them wisdom and knowledge, that you give them understanding above their own, that you would always help us all to seek after not what's easy or what's hard, but that we all try to find what's right. And we just asked you that you just guide us, lead us and direct us. We ask you to bless them with the wisdom and knowledge that they need as they work through issues and things and difficulties that they may face. We just asked you that we understand that there's no problem, there's no difficulties that we ever face, that we can't come out successful with your help. So we lean on you. We understand that we're mere human beings, but we ask for your help. Watch over us and care for us, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Counsel, you have before you tonight the agenda for tonight's meeting. I would ask that you, under new business, item six, put in there six A for the swearing in of our new city clerk, Ms. Gail Strickland, and make item number six, six B. Are there any other changes that anyone would like to make? If not, I'd ask for a motion.
So I move to approve.
Have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed likewise. Alright, counsel, you have before you tonight also the minutes from the regular, last month's regular meeting. Is your wishes on that?
So I move to approve.
You got a motion to approve the regular minutes?
Second.
Got a second? Any further comments? If not, all in favor, say aye. Opposed likewise. Alright, you also have before you tonight the closed session minutes from January. And what are your wishes on that at this time?
So I move to approve.
A motion to approve?
Would add that there's a minor typo with Chief Eddie Martin's name that needs to be corrected, and I'll second his motion.
Okay, further comment? If not, those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The noes?
No.
Okay, four and one. We move on at this time to comments from attendees. If you're here tonight and you have something to bring before counsel that we're not discussing on the agenda, if you're on the agenda, we'll allow you to come up soon as we get to that. But if you're here for anything else tonight you need to comment on, please come forward and we'll listen to you. Okay, thank you. At this time, we'll move along to item six A, which is to swear in Ms. Gail Strickland as our new city clerk. Unfortunately, our former city clerk, who'd been here for seventeen years left, and we're gonna miss her tremendously, and Ms. Strickland's gonna have some big shoes to fill. Next item of business will be item six B, which is public hearing on resource recycling rezoning request. Mr. C.H. Lee, president of Resource Recycling located at two thirty-four Backley Dairy Road, filed a rezoning request. The request is to rezone the parcel from light industry to general business or as an alternate neighborhood business, which has less intensive zoning designation. Mr. Lee has plans to divide the building into multiple spaces for commercial sales, and rezoning request is attached. At this time, we will listen to anyone who has comments, and just have one at a time come up.
Mayor, before you start, I have one question.
Go ahead.
Attorney, this property that's being requested to be rezoned is like three hundred feet from my home. Do you see any reason as to where I would have a conflict with that?
No, I mean, for a legislative matter, it's...
I know it's financial.
Financial, it's public, it's your official conduct, but unless you're a business partner, unless you're talking...
Okay. Just wanted to make sure before we went any further.
Have anyone has any comments? Yes, state your name, please.
My name's Jerry Smith, can you hear me? Anyway, I live directly across the street from this property we're talking about, and I just don't feel like this is appropriate place for a flea market. These guys, I know they're staying out, it's a little strip mall, but they kind of toned it down. But they're planning to put a full-blown indoor/outdoor flea market, is what they want to do over there. There's not parking that's sufficient for it. I just feel like they'll be parked all over the streets. They told us at the planning board meeting that all the parking is gonna be inside the fence, that all the tables and debris, they're gonna clean it up every day and take all the tables inside, and I hope you believe that, because I don't think I do. But anyway, there's just not the parking. I spoke with the Richmond County Building Inspector, Gary Williams, today, and he told me to ask the council if for some reason this thing was approved, and I'm praying you won't approve it, but to attach some conditions to it, that he's gonna require them to have an engineer to draw it up, you know, it needs to be engineered. The building's being converted from an industrial warehouse to a commercial business building, and it wasn't designed for that. There's all kind of safety issues with it, with the parking. You know, it has to have parking, handicap parking spaces for each business that they plan to put in there. It needs to have a safety for fire, rescue, to be able to access the building, that they'll have direct access to it with parking, just like you'd see at Walmart or Lowe's. And this building has nearly thirty thousand square feet, it's not a little corner covered over there. And so all the requirements that they would require Lowe's, Walmart, should be applied to there too. And he's going to, you know, request an engineer to draw one for the building, with paid parking, planning mark parking spaces, handicap parking spaces. The only way you can do that is to pay the parking lot with proper landscaping. The building is an old metal buildings, all rusted up, been banged up with tow motors, Ford wheels, over the years. And it needs to be, kind of, they need to do a little work to it to kind of complement the neighborhood, I would think, a little bit, you know, a building of this size. But it's just not the parking, there's just, I mean, that's the major issue with me. I just see them parking all up and down the streets. I don't know if you've been to the two twenty flea market lately, but, you know, a building this size attracts a lot of traffic on the weekends. And I just don't want to see that across the street from my house. And so I'm asking the council to deny it, but if you do, Gary Williams asked me, he says, if you have any questions, would you contact him tomorrow morning at the Building Inspection Office? And Gary is the chief of Richmond County Building Inspector. So anyway, he asked me to pass that along to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
My name is Herbert Bruce, and I live across the street to it, halfway across the street from it. And it's been zoned as is for fifty years or more. I don't know when it started, I rent, rent it out, hadn't been kept up too good. And Backley Road, a lot of wrecks on it anyway. And this could put more traffic in. I don't think for it, and I hate to be against anything telling someone what they can do with their property, because I have property, I live by the zoning of Hamlet, I live by the zoning of Richmond County. I have both places. So I'm against it, let it stay as is.
Thank you, Mr. Bruce.
Honorable city council members, ladies and gentlemen, my name is C.H. Lee, I'm the owner of the building that I would like to request the council members to approve. The building used to be a manufacturing facility. I operated for many years, and the business is hard to keep up. So I tried to convert that into a distribution center, but it's not really ideal. And the building has been vacant for quite many years, it has been vandalized. And it's kind of like sad to have that building sitting in the city and not utilized. I think it's eyesore to some extent. So we decided to turn that into a more commercial use. That building, if I may, distribute some maps. The building is a very long building, and it's kind, it's a steel building, which is still column twenty feet apart. It's kind of ideal for kind of a retail stores. And I have been searching for a possible use of that building. And I finally find a young entrepreneurial couple that is willing to assume the task. And I'm willing to support them, and was certainly prepared. And we have been advised by Richmond Building Inspector to contact an engineering firm in Fayetteville to come do the engineering assessment. And upon approval of your councils, we will engage them to remodel, to upgrade, outfit the building to fit the building code, and to make it into a proper use. This is not really the perception of a city, like outdoor free market. I think the building is long enough, it can easily accommodate twenty to forty vendors or stores inside. It'll be very nice. We're in the recycling business, we like to reuse some merchandise, maybe some household used material, used merchandise they want to resell, and we will provide a vendor the affordable space. Instead of maybe paying five hundred, six hundred dollars a month for a storefront, they probably only pay hundred dollars, two hundred dollars for a big space. And we can create a lot of business opportunities for small business persons. So that's kind of ideas we have. Of course, the building is not gorgeous. It used to be industrial building, but it's very sound, structurally sound. It's on one floor, about sixteen feet of ceiling. So it's only one floor, there's no safety issue whatsoever. And we'll be hiring the engineering firm recommended by the city building inspector, and we'll build that up to the code, whatever the city or county requires. And that would not only enhance the surroundings, I do not agree with the neighbors. I think it looks better, because it's been vacant and it's been vandalized, and no one really keep it up. We come here, we try to maintain, we cut the grass. But if we have some, the building occupied, it will certainly enhance the look, and will also stimulate the economy for the city. I've been in and out Richmond County for forty years, and I'd really like to see this building come to life again. I hope that our city council would approve my request.
I have a question for you.
Sir, yes.
You've got just the back half of it highlighted, does that mean that was all you were gonna use, the back half of the building, or?
Yes, we were going to start from that back section to begin with. And if the business is flourishing, then we would develop the front portion. But the whole thing will be under the business zone. But it will take two steps. If we can fill out the back, we'll use the front portion for maybe storage of the merchandise for sales. And then when we business warrants, then we'll develop the front portion, and that's our plan. I hope that you will consider and approve it, thank you.
Okay, counsel, any of you have any questions for Mr. Lee?
Yeah, one, right off the bat, how long have you owned the building?
I owned the building probably from nineteen ninety-three. It used to be the Coke Carroll Building.
Furniture manufacturer.
Furniture manufacturer.
Furniture furniture.
Yes, yes, I bought that, I converted it into, I was in the recycling business. We recycled, it was a milk bottle, shampoo detergent bottle, we granulated, we sorted out, and we reuse it, making new product out of it. And I sold the business many years ago, and tried to, and the acquired did not continue that operation after three years, so it has been vacant. And subsequently, I tried to open up a furniture distribution, but it's also very tough. I think the retail will probably be most suitable for that application. Because a building is not like really sophisticated, now distribution center, you have all these robots, it's not like that, but the retail store will be suitable.
Okay, next question. Over the past several years, this looked horrible. Groot up trees, bushes, the side of the building over there where the loading dock at, the top of it's rotten. Stuff throwed all out, or all around the side and the back back there. Why did you start cleaning it up now, just to get the rezoning done? Is that, I'm just trying to underst- what I'm trying to understand is, for years, it was in horrible shape. And now, it seems like when we're trying to get the rezoning going, for, you know, you're wanting to get it rezoned, it's, you know, it's picked up. You know, still some structural things that need to be handled on the outside of it, just from looking at it. But tell us, or tell me, why recently is the time that you started sprucing up the place?
I don't know what you're referring to, like trust all over the place, because the building has been vacant, really no one occupied. Whenever I come, I usually come here, I live in Winston-Salem. I normally travel to here once a week to clean it up. It's a kind of burden to me, I don't want to pay city and county tax, and let the building sit in empty. And so, it's not, it has not been in tip-top shape, but I don't disagree with you. But as far as the trust, I just don't know what you're referring to, because every time I come here, I always pick up bags of trust, people throwing from outside the road. There's no one occupied there, so I don't know where the trust comes from. But I would just, the overgrown, the lawn may not be cut perfectly every time, every time. But I don't think there's any trust, because there's not occupied, no one occupied that.
Okay, let me re-ask the question, have you cleaned it up?
Ah, yes.
And have you did work to the building in the past month and a half?
Yes, we have the roof, multi-roofing replaced. We, I have the front section, the forty, the total building is about forty-six thousand. I have about thirty thousand square foot of the roof, new roof put in, and we're working on the back section of the roof. And if you come by, it's very presentable. And when it's done, because we don't want to spend any more money until we know what it's going to do with the building. So we're waiting for the signal from the city council, then we can hire the engineering firm to tell us exactly what he will require us to do. And it would, I promise, I think I'll be ashamed to own a building, a trusty building. I'm not like that, I like my building to be nice and clean. So once it's occupied, it will be certainly, will be hold up better shape for the neighborhood. Because when it was vacant, I got broken in three, four times. And we have all the copper wire been stripped. My air conditioning been dismantled. And I couldn't afford to keep it up, and the next day, got, my copper wire got stripped again. So I like to put it into good use. And I finally have someone, a very young energetic couple, who is excellent in this business, is willing to develop it. And I am in the position to help him grow the business. And that's, is my position, and I'd like to see that happen, please.
Let me ask you a question.
Sir, sure.
The highlighted portion, is that, is that the portion that they intend to operate in?
Yeah, initially.
Not the front, this back end?
Yeah, the back end will be when we start the first stage.
Okay, I just want to be sure.
Yes, the front section will be kind of stay empty for the time being, until we develop enough business to develop the front section.
What's the best part of that building, the front or the back? Does that play into the factor of you wanting to do the back first?
The front section is bigger. And of course, the back section is taller building, at the taller ceiling. It's about the same, it's just like, the back section is smaller than the tenant can afford to start with. So there's nothing bad of it, or better to start with which one. It's just smaller of the building, smaller portion of the building. And we will start from that, maybe put ten or twenty stores to start with. And if goes, then we'll develop the front portion.
I have a question.
Sir.
So I'm guessing there's no heat or air in this section, are there working restrooms?
Ah, yes, you will work in restaurants. And you'll be, of course, the restaurant in the front office and the back, because it used to be a manufacturing facility, so there are two sections of the public or employee restaurants. And it's been converted and been updated, and we're waiting for approval so we can get engineering firm to tell us exactly what they will require us to do.
Can I ask Mr. Lee a question?
Yeah, go ahead.
You own the building over on Choak Road, don't you? Up near the new school, up in there.
Yeah, I used to own that building as well.
Oh, you don't own that?
I don't own that anymore.
Well, I figured say it was pretty bad eyesore yesterday.
Yeah, no, I don't.
These businesses you're talking about bringing in there, would you be pulling any of my stores downtown in Hamlet, or you don't?
I can actually answer that if I may.
Okay.
Okay, come on ahead. I just, let me ask a question, Ms. Strickland. Is that a property we've had to warn before because of appearance?
Most every year, I have sent a letter for overgrowth. And once receiving the letter, Mr. Lee would come and cut the grass.
Okay.
Mr. Lee, before you step away, I have one question. Mr. Lee, where do you reside at?
I live in Winston-Salem.
Winston-Salem, thank you, sir.
Alright, so state your name.
Rodney Groome.
Again?
Rodney Groome.
Okay, Mr. Groome.
I'm actually one of the tenants for this building, hopefully. Not sure if you have one of these or not. This is what we gave to Ms. Strickland. If it's alright, I'll actually hand one to these gentlemen right fast.
Should be in your packet.
That's enclosure one A.
You'd like to put it on the screen?
You have an extra one you can put on the screen for other folks?
Okay, so this is pretty much gonna be the layout of the inside of the building with vendors. No one is actually coming out of stores downtown Hamlet. I actually am in a store in downtown Hamlet right now, which I plan on keeping up. This is bringing people that would usually take antiques, stuff like that, to the flea markets. This is gonna bring them in there. Other small business that cannot afford overhead, like Thrifty Kids in Rockingham. They cannot afford the rent. So we are offering them a spot at a reasonable price with no overhead. As far as the trash outside of this building, we have been hard at work cleaning up. We have started painting this building. We are investing money in this business, this building, here. If you was to ride by there, you would notice there's only one pile of trash left out there.
Yeah.
And that's it, everything else has been cleaned up, and that will be cleaned up by the end of this week. There's new gutters, new downspouts going on this building. A lot, a lot of work. And if you notice on this picture, there's a concrete pad for parking. We are gonna bring in gravel for extra parking. And we have been in contact with Neil Smith Engineering out of Pinehurst. He is gonna be the engineer on this. Our entrance for this is on Freeman Mill Road, it is not on Backley Dairy. So all parking will be inside the fence. There's no parking beside the road. Nothing we want to do with this business is outside. We do not want a flea market, because our person don't want to go out there and pick up the trash every day, or every weekend. So everything we're proposing to do is inside of these doors.
Can I ask him a question?
Sure.
Are you ready for the March first round opening? I heard yesterday that you could have it.
That I can?
That you could have the opening, March first.
No, if everything goes through, it won't be March first.
It might be footed.
Yeah, it will not be March first. Well, I mean, still got a lot of work to do. Like you said, you know, we've got material on standby to fix outside of the building. That's one of the main things that we need to fix. Like you was talking about on the loading dock, we already have the material purchased to fix that.
I will compliment you on, or somebody, from the time we were down here about a month ago, it was kind of cleaned up out front, it was quite a bit of trouble.
Hard, hard at work, I'm not gonna promise you that.
I'm glad I broke that up, still gotta clean it up.
You're gonna sort of be a general manager kind of position?
My wife is actually gonna be the general manager. She runs the day-to-day operation out of store up in Hamlet now.
You gonna have any plans to take any vendors just on Saturday, or Friday, or Saturday?
Negative, no sir. Like I said, these will be full-time vendors on a month-to-month basis, and many of them will be there much longer than a couple of months. There will be no Friday, Saturday, or Sunday vendors.
Any other questions for Mr. Groome? Okay, thank you.
Do have one for Gail. Do have one for Gail.
Sure, go ahead.
Any, either of these rezonings, if, if it were to take place, could it be to where they had, um, say, an outdoor vending with the zoning that it is?
If you allow B two, which is the general business zoning, you can have flea market outside.
Okay.
If you, B three is neighborhood zoning, which does not allow for a flea market. It also prohibits some other outside sales of big items such as boats, or motorcycles, or RV sales. But B two is the designated zoning district for flea markets, so that would.
B two is outside, B three's inside.
Can I respond one more time?
Mr. Mayor.
Pardon? Mr. Smith, I think, wanted to. Yes, sir, come up, Mr. Smith. Sure.
Look, I'd like to respond to what Mr. Lee said about the wiring, the, the building has been vandalized numerous times. And the wiring's always been put back, but never by licensed electrician, you know. The, the building inspector told me he was by there the other day, and all this new conduit and all was in the building where they replaced all the wiring. No permits have been pulled. Major plumbing's been did, nobody's gotten any permits for doing anything. No licensed plumbers, no licensed electrician. They don't have a general contractor, you know, they're just going there doing what they wanna do. And, you know, I've always had to play by the rules, and I feel like everybody else should too.
Well, they wouldn't be allowed, they wouldn't be allowed to open in there unless the county building inspector authorized it, you know that.
Well, I mean, it still do permit us, you know, you need, you need permit even if you, I don't care who does it and how good you are. You need to be a licensed electrician.
Now, we contract with the county to do all our inspections.
Well, uh, you need a building, you need a building permit.
Yeah.
If you're working on a building that's not yours, you need a building permit, and you need getting inspections for it. They're, they're not there either. They need a general contractor to perform the work, to oversee the work, you know. They're just doing what they wanna do over there, you know, and so. And I see more of the same, you know, whether you approve it, if you allow it, I mean, I don't see them playing by any rules, and I don't know who's gonna police it and make sure they do it, you know. I think it's gonna be a major liability for the city of Hamlet. And it's not adding one penny to the tax base. It's not adding anything, there's not any sales tax, most of these folks don't take debit cards, credit cards, checks. I mean, it's strictly a cash business. I mean, how is that gonna help the city of Hamlet? I mean, they, they're all about, I mean, I'm all about business, I love us, it's a good business coming in. I think this is a business we can do without, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Jer.
May I respond?
Certainly, come up and state your name.
I'm Molly Groomes. I own thirty-two thrift on Hamlet Avenue. Um, we do collect sales taxes, take debit cards. We're very professional, we are a storefront, and we intend to bring that here. Thrifty Kids also takes debit cards, so. But with this, we're doing all the checkout at the front desk. That way, not one, like, one vendor can't collect for another vendor, there's no liability with any of that. Um, so, we are in fact, you know, paying taxes and all of that on our sales and whatever other taxes are thrown our way. I work closely with an accountant, Mary Glenn Hill, uh, in Rockingham. And she gives me guidance when I don't, when I don't know what I'm doing with it. So I'm, I've got someone to hold my hand through anything that, you know, may stump me, and she is a professional CPA, so. Yes, we will be doing all of that. I think that, that's it.
Anybody have questions? Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Certainly, come up and state your name and.
Nancy Perkins, and I live in the house directly across the street from the building.
Your, excuse me, your name again?
Nancy Perkins. And the trash around this building has been there for years. Um, I took some pictures of some of the trash, and the next day the trash was gone. They saw me out there taking pictures, and the trash was picked up the next day. There's still several piles of trash around the building, and, uh, one wall where the loading dock is, is just covered in, in mold and mildew. And the water just stands in that corner of the building. It's, it's awful. And, uh, does Mr. Lee or these people, his investors, do they own any business similar to this that they operate? That we could go and look at to see how they run it?
Ms. Groomes has a business over on Hamlet Avenue.
Yeah, but I mean, something similar to this, though, I mean, one single store is gonna be a lot different than this type of business. And, um, the restroom, something like this with that many people coming in and out, they will have to have a large number of restrooms to, to handle all of it. And, uh, I know he did say that all the parking would be on the other side of the building. But Mr. Lee mentioned all his failed businesses. So if this doesn't make it, what is gonna come in there then? I know if they rezone it like they, they, they want, any kind of business can come in. Uh, from what I understand, a bar, um, a nightclub, anything like that would be permitted then. And, and we don't want that in our neighborhood. I've lived out there since the building was built off and on. And, uh, when it was built, there were no houses out there, but my house, and my grandfather had a house where your Smith's house is now, and the Bruce's. And that was, it was woods just about, and it was different then than it is now with all these new houses. Uh, there's, oh, probably thirty, forty new houses there that have been built in the last few years. And none of the neighbors are, are happy about this, and we don't wanna see it. And we hope that you won't make a decision tonight, that you'll weigh all these factors before you do make a decision. And hope you make the best one for all of our neighborhood.
Thank you. Anybody having, excuse me, council have any questions? Ms. Perkins, if not, come up and state your name, sir.
Hi, my name is William Ferguson. Um, I'm partners with, um, Rodney going in on the business, so I did wanna address some of the questions. Um, as far as the trash being picked up, you know, for the zoning and, um. I picked up most of the trash out there myself and started painting the building. Most of that was to address the neighbors' concerns of how the building looked, and I understand that. Um, we had nothing to do with this building before a month ago, when we came to the zoning. Um, we're trying to improve the building, cause we want the, we want to move into the building, get the business established. But also improve the, improve the neigh, the look of the building. If it sits there empty, it's not gonna get improved over there. Um, so the, the painting, a lot of, I'm not sure where some of this stuff is coming from. Um, we haven't hired an architect, electricians, all, any of that stuff yet until after. Um, what I have been doing is cleaning up, getting it painted, um, getting the trash out. But it, Neil, um, Neil Smith, we are calling him tomorrow, or whenever this gets, if it gets rezoned. Um, he's coming out to the building inspector, everything will be to code. Um, we understand what, what's going on with that. I do have a business fairly similar to this. Um, I own the Hive Recreation Center. I've taken two old buildings similar to this. Um, there was one on Mill Road, um, I improved that building, got everything to code. Um, Tim Combs was inspector on that one. Um, it's, you know, all the pushbars, merge exit lights, um, the entire building painted. Um, I also moved from that location to where the old wholesale carpet building was in Rockingham. And that building was just being used for storage. Same thing, Tim Combs has been inspected that one. Um, so, you know, we're not planning on trying to fly under the radar, keep this, or have the building nasty, or any of that kinda stuff. Um, you know, once we're in the business, the grass will be cut, the, um, trash will be picked up, there's not gonna be all that out there, so. Um, as far as the neighbors, the building is gonna look better than how it has looked.
Anyone have any questions for?
I have one question.
Certainly, come on.
We were just discussing about whether this building's gonna be a fire hazard or not. Is it gonna be required to have a sprinkler system?
I have no idea. We'd have to find out from fire chief.
It, it has a sprinkler system already in the building. Um, a company out of Fayetteville is coming to, um, the building inspector already informed us that we have to get everything checked. Um, but there is already a, a system in there.
Yes, sir, Mr. Lee, come on up again.
I can, I can certainly appreciate the neighbors' concern. And if I were the neighbor, I would certainly be concerned as well. But that's exactly my point. Uh, if the building stay vacant, the building has been vacant for about ten years. And there's, when ba- building is, we try to keep it up. But sadly, this county, there, there's no economic development over the last forty years. I stepped into Richmond County in nineteen seventy-seven. I've been doing business since then with this county. And I'd like to see this county grow as the other counties or cities. Uh, I do appreciate, and I promise the neighbors, because it's, it's pain to me that I don't get this building to its best use. And that's exactly what we try to do. We try to renovate the building, so the neighborhood looks, the neighborhood looks good. And as far as the building, as you gentlemen knows, the building has to pass, first of all, the city council's approval. Then we need to get a building inspector's approval, including, we already have the fire marshal, the, uh, uh, sanitary department, and the building inspector all came to inspect, and we followed their instruction accordingly. And it cannot be, after you approve it, and we cannot open it until all this detail passes the building inspections. Uh, before we can open it for business. If we have a sprinkler system, we're waiting for the approval to get the electricity in, so that we can update our sprinkler system and then get it certified, uh, this sprinkler system is in place. The building is a very simple building, it's no complicated building, it's just simple, a long building. It's a steel structure, it's safe, I don't think there's any hazard or whatever. Uh, the, the, once it's occupied, it would improve the look, or invest money to update it. And, uh, it will be make the neighborhood proud, I would say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. A gentleman at the back.
My name is Bill Drake, I'm the next door neighbor. In the last fifteen years in that area, we've seen substantial growth in housing, probably thirty-five houses in that area. And if I had a hope for that property, seeing something done, which I've had for the last almost twenty years I've lived there, would be to have that building, uh, really torn down and, and recycled. Develop that land into residential housing, which would increase the value of the properties there. And also bring it into the revenue of the city of Hamlet, more tax money. Cause you could get between thirty and thirty-five houses on that land. And, uh, really, the, uh, traffic on our road there, going down Valley Dairy, is, uh, really bad. The, there are accidents there all the time now, and what's it gonna be once this built, this project is in? And is it going to increase our property value, or is it gonna decrease our property values? That's a, that's a question that I really have to debate in my mind. I'm against having that business there.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, well, everybody that wants to have a say tonight, make sure you get your word in. Anybody else? Nobody at this time? Okay, in that case, we will, uh, close the public hearing at this time. Item number eight, uh, excuse me. Next item is to, uh, have a motion as to what to do on this, uh, rezoning.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, uh, make a motion that we do not zone this property, and I've listed. Also, the City of Hamlet Planning and Zoning Board is requesting applications for planning board members. Members serve three-year terms and may reapply for additional terms. Applications can be obtained online at the city's website or at Hamlet City Hall. Completed applications must be submitted by June twenty-ninth. The planning board, planning board meets on an as-needed basis the third Monday of the month at seven PM to discuss and gather information for land use and regulations. No prior experience is needed, and if you have an interest in serving this position, please contact, uh, Gail Strickland at, uh, nine-one-zero, five-eight-two, two-six-five-one, or via email. Also, baseball registration is currently underway here at the City of Hamlet. If you have an interest in a child, or grandchild, or anyone who may be interested, between the ages of five to twelve, we will have open registration between April thirtieth and, um, I'm sorry, excuse me, from February fifth, two thousand eighteen through March ninth. And also, we will have a late registration period from March twelfth through the sixteenth. The cost during regular registration is forty dollars, late registration will be fifty dollars per child. The county has also brought to the city's attention that the North Carolina Housing Finance Agency's twenty-seventeen Urgent Repair Program has been extended to Richmond County. If there is any residents who have an urgent need to fix their homes, by all means, the city encourages you to contact, um, the county office, Natalie Johnson at the county manager's office, or you can come by city hall and we can provide you with the information. But here at city hall, we cannot assist you with, um, with applying or any other type of logistical matters other than, uh, forwarding you to the, uh, county manager's office. Also, a few personnel notes that I would like to make mention of. Mr. E.G. Dunn, our superintendent at the water treatment plant, the wastewater treatment plant, will be retiring soon with twenty-four years of service. And Mr. Gene Stewart will be retiring after seven years of service with the Hamlet Water Plant. I wanna thank both of these gentlemen for their years of service to the city, and, uh, appreciate all that they've done over the years to help us in both of those capacities. Also, I would like to extend my congratulations to Gail Strickland tonight on her appointment as city clerk. Certainly to appreciate her willingness to serve and her, um, and her diligence in following through with, uh, many matters over the years. She's been with the city since two thousand three. And certainly to appreciate her willingness to, um, continue with the city in the capacity of city clerk. And on that same note, would like to also thank Ms. Tammy Kirkley for all of her assistance that she's been to me over the last year as city clerk. And of course, wish her the absolute, absolute best. On that same note, we will shortly be advertising for an administrative assistant here at city hall. Uh, more details will be forthcoming, and we will be advertising accordingly for some of the responsibilities that Mrs. Strickland had in her prior role as code enforcement officer and other miscellaneous duties, that we are hoping to, uh, train and get an administrative assistant, uh, into city hall for. We are currently advertising for a part-time wor- water collections clerk here in the, uh, water department. Where, um, we have advertised, and we are accepting applications for that position. Also today, the police chief made me aware that Crime Stoppers has agreed to increase the reward for any information in the Terrell Martin case, which was of course a tragic, um, homicide at Circle B some, uh, months ago. They have agreed to increase that reward, and of course, encourage anyone who may have information on that to come forward, as well as, um, a reward being agreed upon today by Crime Stoppers for the First United Methodist Church fire. Any type of information that may be, uh, out there on that information, we encourage anyone to come forward to, um, to speak with our police department or with Crime Stoppers. And that is all I have, uh, for now, Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, you have any questions or comments, or the manager?
No questions, but, um, I guess a couple of comments. Uh, absolutely, for, uh, E.G. and Gene, you know, that's, uh, a lot of years of service. Uh, Tammy, you know, we are gonna, Mr. Tammy's been around with us for a while and, and done a lot of, uh, good things for us. Uh, as far as Gail, I, I know the mayor said earlier you have big shoes to fill, but you've been wearing stilts for quite some time, because that's a, uh, just handling some of the code enforcement, the things you've done, there's no doubt in my mind, you'll, you'll do just fine in the seat you're stepping into. So congratulations on that, and I look forward to working with you as, uh, the clerk.
Okay, if not, we'll move along to the comments from counsel, uh, Mr. Martin.
Yeah, nothing other than just reiterate again, uh, congratulations to Gail Strickland for becoming our next, uh, city clerk. Thank you for accepting.
That it?
That's all.
Okay, Ms. Maskey?
No, just congratulations, Gail.
Yeah, okay. Mr. Lindsey?
Same to Gail.
Same to Gail.
Okay. Jesse?
Yeah, just a couple of things. Um, recently, um, Hamlet had the privilege of having some of our, um, finest football players take part in, um, some national, um, events. Um, had one Hamlet native, Daniel Ellerby, participated in the Super Bowl with, um, he's on the Philadelphia Eagles roster. And Melvin Ingram participated in the Pro Bowl. Um, he's with the, I guess it's the Los Angeles Chargers now, I guess. Um, I would like for us to consider maybe in the next month or two to have a proclamation honoring their success, um, from the mayor. That would be, um, certainly agreeable to the, to the council. Um, both of these men have, have really stepped up and did some really good things for our community. Um, both of them have. Um, to us an, an honor to, to know that they've come from, from Hamlet to succeed the way they have. Um, next thing, Jonathan, the, um, the fees for the recreation, um, have you got, is that hooked up online yet? Can you complete the registration process and pay online yet?
No, you have to have a hard copy here at city hall and then we can accept, um, cash or credit in the, in the water department.
Okay, alright. Um, I think that would be pretty cool if we could get that. It may eliminate some of the, I'm sure there's a cost associated with that as well, but, um, maybe something that we could do. And, and also Tammy, you know, she did a great job for us and she will be missed. She served the council, not just this council, but the councils over the years, um, in a very professional and, and ethical manner. I'm gonna miss her, uh, wish her well. But I do, um, I do think we've got someone capable to step in and, and not miss a beat in Gail. So, Gail, congratulations on your appointment. And that's all I have.
Okay. Mr. Bowie?
Uh, just like I said, uh, congratulated Gail, I kinda piggybacked off of Jonathan, uh, what he was saying, but, but, uh, correct with, um, I mean, that our football program's the only program in the county. So, I'm sure these, these guys, I know at least one of them did, uh, went through the program here. So it would be, um, I think, awesome to have them in here and recognize them with a proclamation, uh, for what they do. They, they do still come into town and do, um, football programs out at the, uh, Memorial Ball Field for the kids. And that, that's things they don't have to do. A lot of people leave their small towns, become successful and never return. So, uh, the way that they do it and, and, uh, Daniel, I've talked to him at Hamlet Middle, he's come and, and done some stuff there. And, and I, I think it's, the kids look up to that. And they see, you know, no matter where you came from, uh, you come a little, from a little small town like Hamlet, you can be successful. I mean, and these guys both have, have shown that you can leave from this small town and be successful. Um, I just wanna say, and, and, uh, the groom's left, but it, it's definitely, I've never had to sit on this board and turn down a business. And that's pretty hard. Uh, because I think their plans and what they wanted to do, I think was a, was a good idea. Uh, but at the end of the day, it's, it wasn't them, it's, it's, it's just the owner of the property. And, and I think this, where it could have been headed, it wasn't the right move for the citizens. So I don't ever want the citizens to think I went against something that could have been a positive. I think this would have been a negative. And, and I hate to feel that way and I know we shouldn't really focus on what we think could happen in the future. But at the same time, that's what this job does. Is you can't think about today, tomorrow, next week, you gotta think about five, ten years. That's why we talk about infrastructure and it's, it's all the future of the city of Hamlet. And I may be here next week, may not be, may be here next month, may not be, you don't ever know. Uh, none of us know, but I know that my kids may be, their kids may be, or someone. And I just want them to come back and be able to see their hometown or their parents' hometown as something that you can kind of come to and enjoy. And, and I have just a, uh, things built around this falling in and falling down. And I appreciate the board's thoughts and, and views and, and, uh, and how we voted on that tonight. And, cause it is a hard move to make, so, uh, appreciate everyone, uh, making the right decision on that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, Gail, we're certainly glad to have you. We graciously appreciate the fact that you took on this job and, cause it's tough to replace the city clerk at any time. Over the years, I, I have enjoyed working both with Gail and with Tammy. Tammy was, is a very efficient person, she's dedicated to what she does. And to me, it's like losing somebody in the family. And I am greatly gonna miss her, I do wish her the best and I hope things go well. But, uh, again, we're glad to have somebody that could follow along and, uh, and do this job. Uh, do we have a, before the next meeting, do we have a Good Friday holiday or something coming up? That will be, city be closed?
No.
Easter? You know, it's not, I don't, I have it in front of me. Um, one of the other things is, uh, I know a lot of people have noticed we have a tremendous number of potholes around the city. And, uh, as the weather improves, uh, Mr. Stubbs and his crew are getting around trying to get these things filled and get them taken care of. So please bear with us because they're working on them every day, the weather's nice. And we've had some really bad ones. Uh, if you see one out in your neighborhood somewhere and it's not being taken care of, please call city hall and let them know so that we can get out there and take care of it. A lot of times, we don't, you know, see them all and get them covered. But, uh, we're trying to work on them as best we can. The, um, street work and curbing work and stuff is done with money from, uh, the Powell bill. And each year, we, uh, plan a number of different projects that we do as far as paving issues and curbing and that sort of thing. And we just go till we run out of that Powell bill money. Uh, so, if, if something that needs to be done and we haven't actually finished it up over this fiscal year, hopefully we'll get it done in the next fiscal year. So, uh, but if you do find potholes, we'll take care of those just as fast as we can. Uh, if you find manhole covers that are loose, we need to know about that. There's a lot of stuff like this that because of the weather, uh, we've had issues with it. But, um, again, I would just, although I have no vote on it, I would like to make a little comment about the old Fettner property down there. Uh, I guess my biggest concern about it is what's gonna happen to it ten, fifteen years down the road or even two or three or five years down the road if this project did not work. And, uh, we've got an area down there that is, it is predominantly residential. There's also a new housing development right in behind it back there. And, uh, as they stated before, we're having a number of collisions down in that area. Uh, because of the traffic, it just keeps picking up. But, uh, nobody wants us to see us not get business in Hamlet, I'm all for it and, uh, but we do have to protect our residential areas as best we can. So, uh, we, I think, as hard as it is to do, we had to make the best decision we could tonight, counsel. I thank you. And, uh, that's all I have at this time. I would entertain a motion to adjourn if there's no further business.
Second.
Okay, a motion from Jonathan and second from Jesse or David? Jesse. At this time, we stand adjourned.
Thank you, counsel.